Performing better than our average of California clients. But we do want to point out that there are still 7% of kindergarteners that are chronically absent, and that's going to be influenced as this is excused and unexcused. That's going to be influenced by that number of excused absences. So when we're talking about effectiveness and the wonderful work that everyone at the sites are doing, we've got this thing called the save rate. And what the save rate is, is it literally means, did the student receive the first type of notification, whether it be truancy or EEA, and correct their behavior so as to not even qualify for the second notification? And figuratively, what it means is, did we improve that behavior of an at-risk student? So you're getting fantastic results with the save rate. So, here we go. So your save rate overall average is 66.2%. That's phenomenal, with your highest percentage of students that are saved in, excuse me, fourth grade at 73%. So what this chart is showing us, and here we want higher percentages, so we want to be above the blue line here. 66, over 66% of your students that received an attendance notification from your district did not continue on to receive a second. That is amazing. Wonderful, wonderful work that's being done by your sites to make sure that those notifications reach the parents, because we know that the more that parents are aware of how important it is to be in school, how much school has been missed, then they can work with their child to correct that behavior. And as far as supporting the leadership efforts, again, we're talking about this pyramid of success. So creating that culture of achievement and having that culture be started by creating a culture of showing up. We're communicating, again, to all families. Over 11,000 pieces of communication went to all of your families from the superintendent to launch this idea of showing up, and also then here in June to thank them for having their child show up to school every day. So positive communication to all families. Positive press and media coverage, as well as newsletter articles. And again, the beginning of next year, we, I'm sorry, my slides kind of got a little messed up there. Too much information, too much great information. So at the beginning of next year, we'll have a recognition program where we'll be recognizing the sites for all of the hard work that they're doing to bring more students back to school every day. And we've also implemented a leadership training component for your principals. So we'll be talking about how they're really the, you know, CEOs of their school. It's really about leading from, you know, creating a culture of achievement, not only here at the district, but at each individual site. And as far as increasing parental engagement outreach and knowledge, again, we prepared and mailed the communication pieces from the superintendent regarding showing up. We had 6,300 pieces that went out in January and 4,700 pieces that were mailed in June. And the reason for that slight difference is because we ensured with the June pieces that if there are siblings at the district, that the family only received one letter, as opposed to one letter going for all students. So we were really excited, and this is just an amazing thing that your district is doing, communicating with this many families, talking about the idea of showing up. And again, these don't have anything to do with their attendance record. This is straight communicating with the parents about showing up here at the district. And as far as focusing on the manageable students, again, in February, at 101 days into school, there were 972 students in that manageable group that had missed between 5 and 10% of the school year. And again, they're on the tipping point. They're in danger of becoming chronically absent, but if we can communicate with those families, alert those parents to how much school has been missed, we can correct those behaviors and keep those students moving over into satisfactory and excellent. So we prepared that personalized letter from the superintendent that alerted the parents how much school had been missed, that we were worried about them, we're concerned, we're here for you, and we just want to make sure that you're aware of how much school has been missed so that we can correct those behaviors. We'll be communicating with those same group of students, those same 972 students here at the end of June, to correlate how they did with their attendance. And we'll be sending out three separate types of notification based off of if they remained in manageable, if they for some reason fell into chronic, or if they improved into satisfactory. All of it is positive, all of it is goal-oriented for the next year. And then we'll also communicate with those same 972 students at the beginning of next school year to say, looking forward to seeing you, can't wait for you to show up every day, that kind of thing. So we're going to continue that positive communication so that we can help move students closer to satisfactory and excellent. And again, building on your success with Attention to Attendance, you really have been incredibly successful in this first year here with A2A. You're getting parents involved early in their child's success and in their child's attendance. You've increased that site-to-parent engagement with that consistent and district-wide process. We do have some recommendations for continued success as far as addressing the high rate of tardies, and also potential additional communication to your pre-K through third graders based on your data. And we're going to be meeting with your cabinet members in July to discuss that. Again, we're creating a culture of achievement here. You all are really creating this culture of showing up, and we're extremely happy with all of the work that you guys have been doing. You're really doing a fantastic job, everyone in cabinet. Sandy, her team, principals, and site staff are really doing a wonderful job. And it shows in your numbers of how you're communicating with parents. So thank you for all of the work that you do. Thank you.
Couple questions.
Yes?
I don't know who was dressed too. Do we ever use something similar to Jupiter Grades?
I'm sorry?
Do we ever use anything similar to Jupiter Grades? Does anybody know what I'm talking about? It's a program where the, for example, I can say, my kids, I get alerts whenever they get anything less than a D, or when they're absent, or when they're tardy. Is there any program like that that we could use? Because that would be...
So there is a parent portal with our student information system, but we need to upgrade our technology, get our teachers with computers, which we're doing this summer, so that they can actually have access to the system. And the portal will need some training, and so we haven't opened the portal yet, but we do have the capability of doing that.
Okay.
It's just going to take some time. It'll probably take a couple of years before we get that up and running.
Oh, cool. And that'll be connected with this program?
No, this is different. The student information system has attendance information in it.
Mm-hmm.
Synergy.
All right.
And it has a parent portal component. We just haven't opened it yet.
All right.
Because it takes education also for families of how to use it, but also if it's connected to the grade book, we're also working on the report card, and that's going to take a year because of... So there's, it's going to take time. But we do have a means to do that, just not yet. We're not ready for it yet.
All right.
Are there any questions?
I had a question that's similar to that regarding the issue that Ms. Brizuela brought up about having the parents sign something. Is there, is it possible to send an email as well, and not just a paper?
We do have the capacity to send an email when the letter is printed and mailed for the exact, and we came up with that for the exact reason that you were suggesting, which is Helpful Students. And I cannot recall if you're doing that.
So it's another thing with our student information system, is getting the emails from the families to get then into the system, so...
You don't have their number, you don't have their address.
Yeah. Some schools have done that, where they have a whole email system. I think FDR is one of them, but, and send out communication, but it takes time to gather that information. Someone's got to put it into the system and then have to link it to A2A.
A2A, all right.
So we're getting there.
It's possible. All right. Can you go back to slide four? Because we actually have a question, probably more for Superintendent Vidalis based, you know, about, are we getting what we asked for with this? But I just kind of wanted to ask about this slide. When I first read it, you hadn't mentioned that this is what you typically see from districts. So how accurate is this to us? Because to me, it seems like we should be addressing everything on this slide. So I need to know if we're being successful or not.
I think in terms of those metrics there, I think it's true. We didn't have a consistent process across the district. Every school was doing what they were doing. There's no way for me to know centrally what's happening at each school site. Now I have the capacity to.
All right.
So I think those are all true, and I think we've made improvements there. And while A2A never made promises of helping us improve our ADA percentage...
Right.
And they're clear about that at the beginning. We felt that some of these efforts were going to translate into ADA improvements, and I think Ms. Kessler, we have seen some ADA percentage improvements this current, this year. I don't know what the number is, but she does.
I do, in the office.
I don't need specifics though.
I do believe it's somewhere around $160,000 difference. I think that's what it was. So we have a net gain about three, three times the cost, so...
Right, it was $50,000?
Yep. So I mean, so it's definitely an investment, and we did see some return on that investment. And is it all this? No, we don't really know. All we know is that two years ago, we used all of our resources in this area, and we made, we had a bump in our attendance rate. Last year, we, I mean, I guess three years ago, then two years ago, we continued with those same efforts, and we saw no movement at all. We saw, I was just saying, relatively stable. We figured we needed to try something additional, because we do want to see more kids in school more often. It helps everybody. And we invested in this, and we did see some improvement as a result. And we can only continue, hope to continue to see more improvement. At least, if we can stay at that level, that, I think that's, because it is, it's a, you know, it's...
It's harder as you...
Once you get up to the 97 and a half percent, 97% range, it's hard to make an improvement there. You will always have some absences and sicknesses. You cannot control for that. But when there's a choice about being absent or not, we want parents to choose to send their kids to school.
All right. Well, it sounds great. It sounds like we have, you know, quality improvement and quantity, so this sounds good. And I would just say that, I mean, it's good to have big data. That's the push now in business, big data analytics. So if it helps the superintendent and the whole district as a whole, then I think it's a good thing, and we're seeing positive results.
May I add to that, too? With the LCAP, we are required to report on chronic absence data, and this system is giving us that data. We had no other way of getting that data. So we, now we need this data.
Right.
It's really helpful for the LCAP accountability. And we have a baseline now.
Yeah, that's great.
That's great.
Are there other questions from the board?
Well, the part I think that is hard to really work on is the excused absences. And it's those parents that do take their children out of school to go on a month's trip or something, or whatever, whatever their reasons are that they take their children out. And I think that the emphasis has to be that it's really affecting their education...
Right.
...rather than affecting our dollars.
Yeah. Well, and I think that's where the, the communication aspect of this is great. I mean, because you're right, those excused absences are the ones that we can affect. We can't affect... You guys didn't come with a cure for the common cold, you know?
Right, yeah.
Those are going to be there, but yeah, getting the word to the parents, like, don't, don't do that. Yeah. Okay, if there are not...
Maybe they have to pay it $5 every time they're absent. No, just kidding.
If there are not other questions from the board, I have two speaker cards to this. Donna Hart, and, thank you. We'll, we'll holler you back up if we need you to answer any further questions.
I do have one more.
Good evening, board and everybody. My name's Donna Hart. I'm now a CERT teacher, whatever, for Daniel Webster, and I'd like to speak a little bit and say thank you for attending to the attendance problems, to the company that's doing it, and to us as a whole. As a teacher for almost 20 years, I can tell you, even one day away is huge for our little ones. We do so much every day. It's really hard to catch them up. It's not like we can tutor them later. So having them in class is really important. I would like to make a couple of comments about the little, about the show. It was well presented. I do feel that what is missing is the communication with teachers. I would not know anything about this program at all unless I happened to walk in the office when some of the upset parents show up, waving letters. So that's how I found out about it in the first place. The absence notices are not communicated to us as teachers. We don't know when they've been sent out. We don't know what kind of letter has been sent out. Being part of Daniel Webster, I can tell you, I have access to the portal because we do our attendance online. So when CPS contacts me back, like today, while I was cleaning my classroom, I could open up my laptop, and I could say, yes, that child's been, that child has been tardy more than 15% of the time, has not been eating, that's why he's hungry, that's why this is happening, that's why that's happening. And it was really great to be able to access that information where there was no administration in the building at that point. So the more you can give to people, the sooner the better. Whether everyone has access to it or not, I say turn it on, open the portals, let the people who do have it get to it. It's that important. As part of my job, it's very important for me to be able to look up all that information, as well as being able to pull up my report cards and my other information on the kids. I would suggest sending home excellent satisfactory attendance awards at least three times per year, given up during the end of each trimester, so that for the children, not the, not the school, not the board, not, not a, not a pretty plaque, but something for the kids. Something tangible, something they can hold on to, something that can make them feel proud. We've been running around looking for Life Touch, the extra photo, you know, certificates, and it's like, does anyone know if there's another one? It's like, it's, you try and get to it at the end of the year and during each trimester, but there's nothing done by the district anymore. So I feel that it was really important, a few years back, we actually gave out medals on the stage, and the kids were so excited and so happy, and it really made a huge difference to them. I'd like to see that come back. And it would be nice if the company would kick in that money for that, because I think it's a really important thing. And, you know, we're paying good money, and I think they could probably kick in a little bit for that. Also, the one thing I do know is that the excessive excused absences are not always going home. The staff is picking them out and deciding which parent's going to complain too much and cause a scene, or this child has a, you know, they have a condition, and it could be argued that they need to be out all day for a doctor's appointment, but do they really need to? And every single day they do that, they just kind of, I know for a fact those are set aside, because I've walked in on those as well. So I want to make sure that the letters that are going out really are going out in a consistent manner for everybody, because that seems the only fair way. Thanks so much.
Appreciate it. That's great feedback. Thank you, Ms. Hart.
I like how you think.
Melinda Hart?
Yeah.
If I may, I just want to say thank you for those, those candid words. Those are exactly the information that needs to get to us, and it takes courage to say things like that, and I think it's going to resonate. Thank you.
Yeah. Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. I want to advocate, or at least just put the idea in everyone's mind tonight, for something that I saw this year in another city, in Cincinnati, which is community schools. And in a community school, there is a clinic, and there is sometimes mental health services. You might think right off the bat, we can't possibly afford that, the logistics are difficult. But what I saw in Cincinnati was a partnership with the city. Not sure we could achieve that, but we could ask.
That's right.
And I saw also repurposing or shifting around funds that were already there. Perhaps Medi-Cal or MAH funds or county funds. And I know that we have some services coming into schools here now, which is a wonderful thing for mental health in a couple of schools. But what I want to give you the vision of is what I saw, which is if somebody has pink eye, they go directly to that clinic. There's a nurse in there who can write a prescription. It doesn't have to be that the child is picked up and then, you know, somebody has to go after work and get a prescription, and then they keep this out of school for several days. It's dealt with, like, on the spot. Same thing for lice, so that, you know, it doesn't become something where the child is out for a prolonged period. And little problems are dealt with. Same thing for the mental health issues. If somebody's just having a bad day over something that happened, they've got somebody to talk to, they can sometimes recover and get back to class. And, and along with this idea, which, you know, is an idea, but it's something we could aspire to together and work on together, would be the idea of more nurses, right? Because they can actually affect attendance in the schools and help us get kids back to class as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dart. Okay.
I just asked one with...
Yeah, okay. Mr. Ali has one more question.
It's a, it's an important question, too, for Mr. Vidalis or the young lady. Positive press and media coverage. Inform your community of your results and successes. Is that us, or are you going to do that? How does that happen?
We, there, we did have some positive press once we launched the Attention to Attendance and the Showing Up kind of initiative at the beginning of the year in January. And we'll be doing another press interview once, you know, now that we finish the school year, and putting that out. No, you don't have to do that. We'll do that. Obviously, if you have things that you want put in the press, you know, we can talk about incorporating that into some interviews, but that would be something that we, we would coordinate, and that's part of the, that leadership initiative and being part of that, is we do that sort of, you know, communications work for you.
All right.
Yeah. Looks like it comes from the district, but we are kind of behind the scenes creating those documents.
Publicists.
Publicists, exactly.
All right, great. Thanks.
So Ms. Blasio, I want to thank you for the presentation. Thank you very much. As you could hear from the comments, as you could hear from the comments, I think one of the cylinders isn't firing. We need to get more communication to the teachers somehow, some way. So if somehow, some way we could bridge that gap of communication and information, we could hit those levels of, of targets that you're, that you're looking for. So, yeah, if we could somehow, some way tweak, tweak the program so we get more information to the teachers.
One of the components, as I mentioned, that we're adding next year is this principal training component, and we'll be providing communique tools to them to share with staff on, on, on the results, results kind of like this, letters, things that need to go out in that capacity. So we'll be adding that for next year so that they'll, the principals and site leaders and administrative leaders will have the tools to communicate what's going on with Attention to Attendance with their staff.
Yeah. Copy the teachers when there's letters.
Yeah. And I mean, I'm just saying that this is a criticism to get, to get more efficacy into the program, get the communication down to the, to the people on the front line.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was a really helpful presentation, and some great feedback from... Okay, this brings us to Section Two, Curriculum Instruction. Item One, Acceptance of Donations.
Once again, my favorite part. I want to thank everyone that gives from their, from their heart to the, to the district. I want to thank Yvette Rauls Torres, Ms. Nicole Colette, the Wells Fargo Foundation, Educational Matching Gift Program, Wells Fargo Community Support, United Way Campaign, and Ms. Michelle Paltao, motion to accept the following donations as stated.
Second the motion. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that was unanimous with thanks. Brings us to section, item two, the Local Education Agency Plan Progress Report. Ms. Sandy McCulley.
Yes. So this is, the LEA Plan, the LEA is our district, and this is a plan that we were required every five years to develop. We approved this back in 2012, but we have to annually update it. Just to give you a little descriptor of what, how it falls into the LCAP, the LCAP, which was, the public hearing was earlier, that's the big plan that is encompassing all of our district goals and the eight priority areas. The LEA Plan falls underneath it. And the LEA Plan has really mainly academic goals, so proficiency in reading, language arts, and math, annual progress in learning English. It also has some goals for parent involvement. And so to show how it fits in the LCAP, this was that one-page flyer that I shared with you the last time I presented the LCAP. It's also posted on our website. I do have it in, translated in Spanish as well. But it shows our goals with the LCAP, and so our LEA Plan fits into Goal Number One, which is improving student learning outcomes, having students prepared for college and careers. And then also Goal Number Five, which is engaging and communicating with the community. So our LEA Plan and our LCAP are all part of this system, multi-tiered system of support, response to intervention. And so it all falls under this system, this idea. And the RTI is the acronym for it, because, you know, we love our acronyms. And so this multi-tiered system of support, Tier One is just that good first instruction. So most of the students should be able to learn it the first time. There's going to be a small group of students that need that second, the re-engagement to that lesson, and that's usually during the school day. And then that Tier Three is that intensive instruction for students that just need the tutoring, that extra support. And then students that are still not getting it, that's the referral to special education. And so all of this is a system-wide alignment, so our district, our schools, our classrooms, all in alignment with the LEA Plan, the LCAP, and response to intervention. And so what we do is we look at our student data, we look at our student performance, and we ask ourselves these four essential questions. What do we want our students to learn? How will we know they have learned it? How are we going to respond when they didn't learn it? And how will we respond when they did? And so that's more of the extensions. And so what I'm going to do today is share with you some of our benchmark data results and analysis. As you know, in the past, we have used the CST, the STAR, as one of our measures, and we had district benchmarks that were aligned with the CSTs. We are transitioning, as you know, to the Common Core. Last year, we used for math, we used MARS, which was more aligned to the Common Core than to the CST. English Language Arts, we did not have an assessment that completely aligned with the Common Core. We are still working on it. So we still thought we were going to have CST this year, so we just kept the CST-aligned benchmarks. But then they suspended that at the beginning of the year, and we didn't want to throw in a new assessment that we weren't sure if it was aligned to Common Core. So what we did for English Language Arts was we kept that benchmark window, and we used curriculum-embedded unit tests. The data you're going to see, it, the unit tests, they showed students understanding the unit, but it really didn't show them preparation for Common Core. It really was hard to compare the two. And so you're going to see the results, but keep in mind, it's not totally accurate progress monitoring, showing how students progressed throughout the year. And we are actually working on a different assessment. The English Language Arts Department is working really hard on getting a more appropriate assessment for us, and we have two of our representatives here today. So English Language Arts, this is district-wide benchmark assessment results. These are the unit tests in the curriculum-embedded units. The blue bar is the October benchmark, which was Unit One in English Language Arts, and then the February benchmark is the, I think, I believe it was Unit Three for most grade levels. So what the unit was given in February, that's the red bar. This is the percent of students that scored proficient on those unit tests. The first bar on the far left, the first two bars, is district-wide, so you can see that we did have an improvement, and then it's by grade level. So every school site also had this data. Every principal used this data in their data dialogues, where they looked at how students performed over time, and the grade levels, that there was a dip, they went back to the staff, said, you know, is this something that was maybe the assessment was more difficult? Or was it maybe certain students that had struggled with it? And so really, this was a way for us to determine what were our next steps. So you can see, English Language Arts, like I said, really hard to compare. We're not going to be using these assessments for benchmark next year. We're going to do different ones. But at least it's a point-in-time measure for us. Math shows a little different story. We used our MARS tasks, which are more aligned to the Common Core. It was one task for one area in mathematics. The October benchmark is a different task than the February benchmark, and it's really where they were in time in their units. But you do see, it's more of a comparison that you can have, because you do see more growth. You'll notice eighth grade had a huge jump in their MARS scores, and we did intensive professional development with our eighth-grade math teachers, because we transitioned to the Common Core in eighth grade already, a year early. So we, you'll notice that there are some huge jumps in some grade levels. The grade levels where there are dips could be attributed to that there was more change in the content from the previous standards to now, and, and like I said, they were different tasks. The MARS results, this is the big MARS test that's given every March, and so I'll orient you to this slide here of what the bars mean. We have the blue bar, which is last year's MARS, and that was five tasks. And then, so you can see district-wide. The green bar is, we're part of a consortium, mathematics assessment consortium. It's 57 districts in California. Some of the local districts include Woodside, Menlo Park, San Mateo, Positiva, Palo Alto. So some really high-performing districts are in this consortium. So we have the percent of students in the consortium that are benchmarked in green. We don't have one for overall, but we do have one for grade levels. And then the purple is our district percent at benchmark overall and by grade level. And so the one thing I want to point out is, at every grade level, almost every grade level, our students exceeded the consortium benchmark. level, our students exceeded the consortium benchmark. So that was exciting to see. You can't necessarily compare 2013, 2014 because they're different tests as well. But it's, the comparison really is from the green bar to the purple bar. So you can see, even the ones that were below, were just slightly below in some grade levels. We also, as we've done in the past, we want to make sure that we pay attention to our student groups that have historically not been performing as well as other student groups. And so our English learners, Hispanic, Latino, and our African-American student groups have historically struggled. And so we want to make sure that we always continue to pay attention to those student groups. So it's the same benchmark assessments, but the English learner data was pulled out. You can see overall, the blue bar is October benchmark for the ELA unit test, and the red bar is February. There is growth overall district-wide. But it's really hard to compare English Language Arts because of the unit tests. And we will have a different one next year, like I said. For math, you can see for English learners, there's, it kind of mirrors the overall district for all students. There is growth. Eighth grade shows a huge growth as well as second grade. And these are just the one-task assessments. Hispanic, Latino, you'll see the same thing with English Language Arts. Slight growth in district-wide, but difficult to compare throughout because of the unit tests. It's not meant to be a benchmark. We just use it as a benchmark. And then same with our Hispanic-Latino students in math for that MARS task. So you can see growth for our Hispanic-Latino students in math. Our African-American students, it's a different chart than the ones you've seen, so I want to make sure you understand what I have here. So the first two bars, that's October. And the second two bars is February. So the blue is English Language Arts. So you see from October to February, 87 students. It's not a percent. We have 146 African-American students in first through eighth grade in our district. So 87 students performed or scored proficient on the English Language Arts test in October, and 90 students scored proficient in February. And then math, we had a larger jump. 57 scored proficient in October and to 106. And that's on the MARS test. So the same test you've been seeing throughout. So, next steps. As I keep saying every time, we're in a limbo here. We don't have proper benchmarks. We're still working on it. Smarter Balance, which is the assessment consortium, they are supposed to come out with some formative assessments for us that we could use. They have a digital library that they just released, and I looked at it, and there were no formative assessments for us. So we're still trying to figure it out and trying to make sure that we have ways to monitor student growth so that teachers can use that data to help them, as one of their measures, to help them with their instruction and determine who needs more support and who needs to have, be challenged. So we're gonna continue analyzing benchmark data, whatever that is. We're gonna keep trying to match with the Common Core. Math is a little more aligned than English Language Arts, so we are working on that. And then we're also gonna continue our professional development. Next year, as you know, we're gonna have, we have a collaborative with the high school district and all the feeder districts where we're gonna have professional development together in math. And our first round is starting this summer in June 24th, 25th, and 26th, 24th, 25th, 26th, I think. Next board meeting, I'm going to have a list of all the professional development that we're gonna offer next year so you can see. And it's a lot. So we'll have English Language Arts, English Language Development, Social Studies Science, PE, all of that will be included as well as math. And then we're gonna continue developing our instructional leadership teams, working on response intervention and looking at our data. So it's, data drives instruction and helps us see where our students are to help us improve student learning outcomes. Any questions?
Not a question, but I guess once we work out the kinks and understand how we're gonna assess, it just seems like we need to pay attention to third and fourth grade.
But it may not be, it might be the assessment that's the problem and not the...
Right. So we have to figure, just kind of pay attention to that.
Yeah.
And then, have you heard anything from Silicon Valley Community Foundation? Because I heard that Mark Zuckerberg is donating a bunch of money.
Dude. I think it's for start of schools, wasn't it?
Yeah. So I think he did donate a lot of money to the community foundation. What I did hear was, don't call us, we will call you.
All right.
So certain districts were tapped to receive some funds.
Already, yeah.
Other districts, you know, have been calling and they're saying, don't ask us, we'll contact you. Some of it is for technology, some of it is for charter schools, some of it is for professional development, so.
Right. All right. So don't call them then.
Call them. Are there, excuse me, are there other questions or comments from the board for Ms. McCulley?
Thanks.
If not, yes, thank you.
I wish I had better data to share, but it's...
You know, we knew that this was going to be a year when data was going to be...
And we won't really have data in the fall. We won't, I won't have that STAR report. We might have Science, because that's what was in the Kappa, but we won't really have, this is the data that we have right now. And it's not great.
So one of the important considerations that we, and decisions that we made this year was, we knew we didn't have the right assessments to be able to measure progress over the year. But we also knew that we had the right structure in place. And so rather than get rid of the structure because we didn't have an assessment, we figured we would sort of use some assessment to sort of keep the structure in place so that when we get the right assessment, the structure doesn't have to be rebuilt. So, you know, we sort of kept some of the structure. We've lessened a little bit of the analysis because we knew that it wasn't the best assessment. But we did keep those assessment windows in place because eventually we'll plug in an assessment that is aligned and that can serve to provide information that schools and staff need to make instructional decisions.
Okay, great.
Make it data.
Yeah. All right.
Analytics.
Section Three, Business and Financial Procedures. We have a presentation on the Regional Groundwater Storage and Recovery Project. Mr. Greg Barto from the San Francisco Public Utility District.
Thank you.
I was gonna say it's more than the same as the last one. Thank you.
So I can just provide a real brief information here. So Mr. Barto's here, as mentioned, from the SF Puck Groundwater Program. And he's gonna discuss a project proposal that's being brought to us. It's just information only at this point. I think he'll explain, there's still a couple more regulatory hoops that must be gone through or maybe they've already been passed. And then this item will come back to the board in the fall with a particular memorandum of understanding or memorandum of agreement between the two agencies about what will happen, how it will happen, and what the considerations are back and forth. So, Mr. Barto, please feel free to provide your information to the board.
Thank you very much.
They do have some information. I think you've received a couple of pieces of background information in the last year on this. This has been in the works for quite a while.
Thank you, and good evening, Board President and other members of the Board and Administration. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Greg Barto. I'm the project manager from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. Also with me tonight are our right-of-way manager, Brian Morelli, and our communications liaison, Miranda Ignalcius. And then, well, from the city of Daly City is Patrick Sweetland, the Director of Water and Wastewater Resources. Daly City is a partner with us on this project. And so tonight, I just wanted to provide a brief presentation on our proposed regional groundwater storage and recovery project. And that involves citing a groundwater well on the Ben Franklin Intermediate School in the corner of the playground. First, just briefly, our agency. So we're a wholesale water supplier to 26 wholesale agencies in the Bay Area. Our supplies are 85% in Hetch Hetchy in Yosemite National Park and 15% from local reservoirs on the peninsula and in the East Bay. And then, just as far as the project goes, this is a dry-year project. We're trying to develop a dry-year water supply here in what we call the Southwest Side Basin. And that's the area outlined in the map in red. And so this is a partnership with the city of Daly City, the city of San Bruno, and California Water Service Company that supplies water to South San Francisco. And what we're trying to do is develop an underground storage reservoir for use during dry years. And that's, the amount of water is 60,500 acre-feet. To put that in perspective, that's about the size of Crystal Springs Reservoir that you see when you're driving down Highway 280. So we're gonna bank that water for use during a dry year. And that'll help all of the 2.3 million residents that are customers on the Hetch Hetchy system, including Daly City. There'll be 16 new wells that would produce collectively 7.2 million gallons per day. And one of those wells we're proposing is at the Ben Franklin School. And this protects us against drought. We've got a design drought of up to seven-and-a-half-year drought. We could draw that much water from that savings account with the project. So how that works is currently, water levels are, in some areas, 200 to 300 feet below the ground surface. Daly City pumps groundwater to meet part of their water supply as well as those other entities. And during normal and wet years, we would provide more water to those entities and they would reduce their groundwater pumping. And by reducing their groundwater pumping, then sort of the middle slide shows, water levels will increase because they won't be pumping. And then in dry years, then we would operate those wells and draw on that reserve, like a savings account during dry years to provide an extra source of water for the region. Just some background, so the project is still subject to environmental and our commission review and approval. We have a draft environmental impact report that we have circulated. We evaluated a number of sites throughout the basin, 47 different sites initially between Daly City and Milbrae, and selected 16 preferred sites, including the one in Ben Franklin Intermediate School. Those sites were selected due to location, yield, proximity to pipelines, for a number of factors. This was, looked like a very good site. We've had discussions with district staff since back in 2008. This summer, we expect to complete the environmental impact process, review process, have that certified approval by our commission. Then we could complete negotiations and, as the superintendent mentioned, come back to you and try to reach agreement with the memorandum of understanding. If that then is successful, then we could start, we would look to start construction next summer in 2015 and subsequent summer and winter breaks, but constrain any of the construction to the time when the school is on recess. And then the entire project would be operational and ability to be used by 2018. This is an air photo of Ben Franklin School. North is to your left, and the well is, the well site is down here in the corner. It's about a 20-by-30-foot fenced enclosure. I'll show you a little detail of that. The rest of this is some underground piping that would connect to Daly City's distribution system, actually. And Daly City actually would operate this facility. We would own it. We're working on the, we would do the construction, but we've been working with Daly City on the planning and design of this and the other wells since, for a number of years. We would also, there's currently a running track here that's in a bit of a worn state, and we would redo that, re-stripe it, make it a modern 100-meter running track, and also pay for any other costs for the district working with us on this. So it involves drilling about a 710-foot-deep well. Then there'd be a fenced enclosure with some controls, the utility connections for water, stormwater, electricity. We would include that new running track. And then there'd be a new vehicle gate up at Park Plaza Drive for entering into the playground there. So this is just a schematic plan view of the well. So the well is in the middle, and there'd be a fenced enclosure with some controls inside, transformer on the outside, on a pad. The fenced enclosure would also have fence screening on the top so that balls, you know, errant ball wouldn't fall in there. And this is a little detail of the running track. So if, the current proposed milestones, again, subject to the approvals, we would like to complete the draft memorandum of agreement this summer and then come back after our approvals are completed, then work with the district staff and the board to finalize the agreement. Then construction could begin. And we were looking at June of 2015 as the first stages of construction. Probably do the well drilling the first summer break and then come back and complete it with the controls and the other utilities the next summer. And that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time. Happy to take any questions.
I'm trying to figure out where exactly it's gonna be? On the top or down below?
Where is it located at? Yeah, I can go back to the...
Is it gonna be down below in that area that we don't use?
Yeah, it's back behind existing...
No, it's actually in the field that is used. You see there, the area between Garden Village School and Ben Franklin School, that field, there, the main field that's used on a daily basis. It will be in that lower right corner. Actually, I don't think that is field level. Is it in the, sort of in the terrace area a little bit up high? Or is it actually on the first...
It's back towards the terrace, but it's still on the level.
Still on the level of field, but it's in that corner of the property there.
We'll take a look somewhere and see what it looks like.
Yeah. You can actually see it if you were at the, if you go to the end of that parking lot and you look down.
Which parking lot now?
The parking lot that, right there.
Right there.
Where that red dot is.
If you were standing here, you could look down and see...
The main parking lot, not the one outside.
This is Ben Franklin.
So that far one?
Yeah. And if you go...
They have two. They have two. That's why I'm trying to figure out where it is.
The one on the south end of the building.
Okay.
So if you go to the end of that parking lot there, you look down, that's the area that it'll be.
But it's down, right?
It's down at the level of the field, yes.
Okay.
What's it gonna cost?
This well is about $1 million with the well drilling and the associated piping.
Taxpayers.
It won't be costing us that.
It's not.
So my question is, you're in partnership with the city of Daly City, which is great, but what about the county?
The county is a permitting agency for permitting the well, but other than that, they don't...
That property is not Daly City. That property is Coma. Unincorporated. So, I mean, we should have them come in and help us out, right? Shouldn't we encourage them to be partners with the money, for the money?
That's not really our issue because it's not our money or our project.